Liberty and justice for all.
Next item, item four is public appearances, public's opportunity to speak about any subject that's not a specific agenda item. I think we have one fourth of the item here.
Is it right?
All right. Number five, discuss and consider minutes of the regular village board meeting of October fifteenth and of the budget workshop of October twenty ninth. We should be electronically back at any questions, comments. I'm fine with taking them both at this point if you want, if anybody has anything.
Just a couple of titles.
Sure. And which one?
Uh, both.
Go ahead.
Just my names filled wrong on the twenty-ninth one.
The C instead of a D or something?
No, there's no C.
Oh, okay.
So, nothing big deal, either of them, so. And then I have an extra L in the fifteenth one. On this list, tell me a motion to approve both of those changes.
A second?
Okay, motion and second to approve both the October fifteenth village board minutes and budget workshop minutes from October twenty ninth with the corrections that Melissa mentioned. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion passed. Number six, presentations to the board, a presentation by associate appraisal. Do you, do you want to come in here?
Hello, yes, is there a speaker or mics on?
Uh, their mics are on the table, so you'll be picked up. And then that white thing is a camera, so you can put it on the set behind you if you have anything that you want to...
It's okay, I don't have anything you can put on the projector.
Okay.
Great, so everybody can hear me?
Yep.
My name is Dean Peters, I'm associate appraisal. And I also have Nick Laird here, who's been the assessor, primarily in charge with the assessments in the village for a number of years. Deb Winter asked us to come, I guess, we weren't able to make it at the budget workshop on the twenty-ninth, but we were discussing with her this sort of the state of the assessments, the level that we're at. And this will be the first year in two thousand eighteen that we fall below the ninety percent assessment ratio. And it's also ten years now since the last revaluation has been done. The pattern we've been on with the assessments is we've done revaluations as necessary in the past. And the revaluation is when every single property in the village gets reassessed, visited, updated, and so on. And then in the years in between that, we've basically been doing the minimum scope of work, which is maintenance, just maintaining the assessments at the current level unless there's a physical change to the property, something gets built or destroyed or added on to, or new parcels get created, and so on. And so, what ends up happening is if you do maintenance assessment for a period of time, inevitably, you're eventually going to have to have a revaluation again. The Department of Revenue recommends that revaluations take place every ten years, which would be, you know, from two thousand eight to two thousand eighteen would have been ten years. If we do the reassessment next year, it would be eleven years. But we were talking about costs, and it sounded like having a full revaluation where we actually go and look at every property, go through the interiors of the homes, that that would be cost prohibitive at this point for the village. So, we were looking at whatever alternatives are available. And the most cost-effective option to get your assessments back into compliance, get the assessments back up to a hundred percent, is to do a simple market update, which means that we will only visit those properties that we need to visit for sales, building permits, and so on, the same as we would do for a maintenance assessment year. And then, the rest of the properties, we would use whatever information we already have on record, in terms of bedroom bathroom counts, condition of the homes, which comes into play as homes get older, some get updated, some don't. We would just use whatever we've got in the records and reanalyze the market conditions with the sales and update everybody's assessment, so we can get back to a hundred percent again. Deb said some of this stuff was discussed at the budget workshop, but she anticipated that there were still some questions that we would be able to help answer. So, I guess at this point, I'm open for questions. Do we want to go that route?
Any questions for Dean?
So, Dean, from your understanding and doing this, I'm assuming you do this for other communities around Wisconsin, what you're proposing versus a full assessment, how does, have you seen the need to do a full assessment, say, two or three years down the road, or is the, what you've proposed enough that more likely it'll be five or more years down the road?
Good question. Well, there's two different issues at play. One is the immediate issue of the municipality being out of compliance. Once your assessed values are less than ninety percent of the sale prices for most of the properties, then the state will say that the municipality is out of compliance in terms of value. So, that's the issue we're immediately trying to address. The other issue is the quality of the property records. So, the state says that the assessors are supposed to go out and physically visit the properties periodically to update the digital photos, check the condition of the homes. Inevitably, things get done without building permits and so on, so those things don't always get caught until we systematically visit all the properties. I think by doing a market update, what we're not really addressing is the need to visit all the properties. Realistically, we're fairly confident in the quality of the records. We've done revaluations here in the village several times since I've been the assessor and since Nick's been the assessor. And so, you know, we've already done measurements of all the properties. I think the main thing is the condition issue. Properties change in condition, some are better updated, some aren't. And when houses get to be twenty-five, thirty-some years old, there can be some differences in condition, even in the same neighborhoods. Those are things we'd update. We'd update digital pictures if people have changed, you know, changed the look of the exteriors, for example. And then, if we were to do interiors, we would obviously get information if things were done to the interiors, remodeling, finishing of basements, things like that, that may not be in the assessor's records. So, by doing the market update, we address the issue of the valuation side of it. We don't necessarily address the issue of updating the records. Inevitably, that will have to be done at some point, although I don't think the Department of Revenue would push you on it. If you do a market update in two thousand nineteen, you might get reset for another ten years before the real need to. To update the physical records would be pushed by the state, for example.
Okay, so in your experience, though, in doing this partial evaluation, have you seen municipalities needing to do it sooner than, again, I'm looking at three to five years, or has it been more like the ten years you just referred to?
You mean in terms of adjusting for the values?
Yeah, in terms of needing new pictures, doing a full evaluation. So, my point of all this is getting at is if the board approves moving forward with just this partial or whatever we would call this, I'm not sure what you call it, and then in two years, because our pictures aren't good enough, or whatever, we're doing a full evaluation, then we're just kind of throwing money down the road, down, you know, the tube instead of actually doing a full assessment. That's what I'm trying to...
Yeah, I understand.
...your expertise.
The quality of the assessment records right now does meet and exceed the minimum standards in place from the Department of Revenue. We don't foresee them changing those standards. They recommend we retake photos every ten years and so on. Now, anything that's been built or sold in the past ten years, we've definitely taken more modern pictures. So, I don't think that you're gonna, you're gonna see any, anything coming from the state that says, hey, the assessor needs to go and retake pictures, or re-measure homes, or anything. We meet those standards today, and we've been maintaining that with any new construction.
Thank you, Dean.
How about the commercial properties? Is this, we're talking about, does that include commercial property?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And do you do the same thing, same process for commercial that you just described for residential, where you just take basically the past information and...
Yep, the existing property records. Commercial valuation, you know, residential value, it's easier to do, to do neighborhood trends and to say, you know, there's a lot of sales of a particular age range of home, or in style, and story height, and so on. And you can get more data to work with. With commercial, you know, we'll be researching what, any leased property, what the lease rates are, looking at income approach values. We do have some sales of commercial property, we have some land sales and some, some sales of buildings. And so, those will be used as a baseline, and then we'll recalculate all the values based on whatever information we have, just the same as we would with residential.
Okay. How do you handle something like hydride? Is that valued on the buildings? You mentioned lease values. Is it based on the utility that is being used by the company, or is it just the buildings?
Hydride is not assessed by the local assessor. That's either, it's either manufacturing or it's a utility, I'm not sure. But I know that we don't assess hydride, the plant itself. But, I mean, the concept is the same with commercial as it is with residential. The assessor has to consider what the property would most likely sell for in the open market. So, that's really the bottom line. It's, it's what is the resale value of that real estate.
If the board should choose the full reevaluation, are residents legally required to allow assessors in their house to walk around, take pictures?
No, and they never have been. Nobody requires that you allow the assessor to view the property. Depending on where you are in the state, we find that, you know, most people are fairly cooperative, because they understand that they're gonna get the most fair assessment if the assessor has the most accurate information. We try our best to make it a very painless process for property owners. If people aren't home during the day, we can make arrangements for evening walkthroughs. They usually take about fifteen minutes. We don't move people's furniture or measure anything inside the interiors, but we're just primarily looking to, to look at which rooms there are, look at the condition and the quality of the interiors, and try to factor that as best we can into the values. But I think what we've been noticing and a trend is that, well, especially in communities like, like the village here, where a lot of people work away from home, they work in Madison, or that when we do our, our property business in the daytime, we don't find a lot of people home. So, a lot of this is arranged in the evening. And our percentage of entrance rate here in the village is likely to be lower than it would in some other communities, just due to the demographics and so on.
Okay, thanks. With the partial reassessment, is it likely that it would get up to at least ninety-five percent then, or closer to a hundred, or just over the threshold again?
If we do them, whether we do the market update or a revaluation, our goal is gonna be to get the assessed values to one hundred percent of market value. That's gonna be the goal. And usually, we can come within a half a percent to a percent of that, depending on where the Department of Revenue falls with their equalized values.
Other than being, getting back to one hundred percent or being compliant, what is the benefit to the village to be at one hundred percent?
Good question. You know, the whole property tax system is designed so that assessments are maintained at a hundred percent. If you look at the city of Madison, for example, they, they adjust different neighborhoods, and I think almost all the assessments annually. Most of the city properties get reassessed every year. And their goal is to stay within that, the design of the state law, to keep the assessments current with all the slight changes in market conditions. Ultimately, the assessor's work doesn't change the total amount of taxes that are collected. So, by raising assessments, we do not raise tax revenue for the village. All that it does is it redistributes the tax levy more fairly according to updated property values. So, I guess that by keeping the assessments current or redoing them and getting them back in line with market conditions, it's more a fair distribution of the property tax burden is really the end result. That's, it's fairness to the taxpayers, I guess, is the biggest thing. Other than that, it's, it's eventually mandated. You know, the state says you have to do this periodically. It's, it's never fun to have to spend more money on any given year, but it's inevitable. And, and, you know, there's just a couple of reasons why we think now's the time. So, it's the fact that it's been more than ten years, and the fact that we're now below the ninety percent threshold, which is measured by the state, so.
My understanding that we pay our school board taxes and our county taxes based on equalized value, not assessed value, correct?
That's right.
And so, if we don't, for whatever reason, when you do all the assessments, you're doing them each independently, and they don't add up to the equalized value, then the equalized value is wrong, right?
It's possible that equalized values are wrong. State probably won't admit to that.
Okay. All right, that's what I was kind of driving at.
We've run into that before. You know, normally, we're, we're pretty close, especially when there are a lot of sales in the particular community. The equalized values generally tend to be pretty good, and there are a lot of sales here in the village. I'm not real worried about the equalized value being wrong here. Some in rural areas, you run into that problem more so. But you're right, the apportionment, how much tax the village is responsible for, to the county, to the school districts, to the state, that's all based off equalized value, because equalized values run at a hundred percent every year, whereas assessors could be at ninety percent or ninety-five percent. So, they really, those apportionments are equalized value, it's more of a level thing.
Good.
Is it possible next year we'd be over ninety percent? Like, does it change like that?
Not likely. I actually printed the history of your compliance, if you're interested in this. I think Nick has copies. I don't know if you have enough copies, but the, if you go back and look at this, the report goes back to two thousand twelve. In two thousand twelve and thirteen, we were at about a hundred and three percent. In two thousand fourteen, it was a hundred and one point seven.
Thank you.
In two thousand fifteen, it was ninety-eight. Two thousand sixteen, ninety-six. Two thousand seventeen, ninety-two. In two thousand eighteen, preliminary is eighty-nine percent. So, what that trend shows is that the assessor's been maintaining the assessed values and adjusting basically for new construction. But in the meantime, market values have been rising. Given that the economy is still strong, we don't see any kind of forecasted decline in real estate values, it's not likely that you're gonna get back in at, you know, above ninety percent next year. It's, I would anticipate that the same trend would continue, and you might find yourself at eighty-seven or eighty-six percent next year, without a reassessment.
Anybody else?
Thank you. All right, you're welcome.
Thanks.
If you think of anything else, you're welcome to call me at work tomorrow, tonight. You have contact information for me?
We can send it.
Yeah, we can get it from Deb.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Number seven, unfinished business, discuss and consider Flint Hall agreement. A couple of attachments in your package.
I was asked, well, as I understand it, the reason that this is back tonight is that there was a motion at the budget meeting not to fund our contribution to Flint Hall. And so, I just wanted to address to you that I think that under the current agreement, we are obligated through two thousand, December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. There, and I didn't see any language in there that allows for early withdrawal of parties. So, you certainly can go ahead and withdraw, but there could be legal consequences to that.
So, if we were gonna withdraw, we could withdraw with one year's notice. We withdraw at the end of the contract, is that okay?
Yeah, I think you, yeah, I think that, that's, that's possible. This, the last time this came up, I then went back, it turned out I had all sorts of Flint Hall agreements in my office. And the first time that this really came up was in two thousand fourteen. There was a lot of discussion at that point as to should the village stay in or not. And I think the Honorable Jennifer Pickle, at that point, said, thanks for worrying about it, Lee, but we're gonna stay in. Right? But you said nicely, so. So, it's, it's really up to the board. I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that there were some consequences to not funding the agreement this year and next year.
Trey, do you think it makes more sense then, if we want to get out of it, just to give them the one year's notice, and then we don't have the obligation of the funding?
If, if that's what we decide to do, I, I just, I believe that very few citizens benefit from our contribution.
That was the, that was the discussion in two thousand fourteen.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that, those funds, we better off put on roads or something like that, where everybody will benefit from, not the fifteen as of first of September that used it.
I agree, I just kind of want to follow the contract, then, I guess. Any thoughts? Anybody else?
I think according to the agreement, we have six months requirement. So, I mean, if we're gonna pay for two thousand nineteen, maybe we take a look and, you know, just mark it down on our calendars in the May timeframe. But if we do decide to exit from the agreement, we'll make the six month notification in the June timeframe. Is what I would recommend.
I agree with John, yeah.
Sounds good.
If you're gonna make that motion, I think it makes sense.
So, do I have to change the motion from the preliminary budget, or?
No, it wasn't.
Yep, it was.
Why not?
It shows we're voted seven, nothing for the, to approve the preliminary budget as recommended by the Finance and Personal.
And they did it without...
They, they voted, yeah.
So, we'd have to make a motion to put that in the budget now?
Let's have to know it in a public hearing. Let's have to make an order that, because it was published the way it was.
That was twenty-two hundred dollars, right?
Yep.
So, we won't make the motion now? All right. Onto new business, discuss and consider operator's license for year July twenty-eighth to June twenty-nineteen for Tyler's Fall. She, it looks like they found no problem with that person, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay, your motion to approve?
How many for motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the new operator's license for July twenty-eighteen to June twenty-nineteen for Tyler's Fall. Any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Discuss and consider liquor license application for Oakstone Recreational LLC. That's a license that goes with the building, correct? Not with an individual, is that?
Business, isn't it?
That, that's the establishment license, not the...
Yeah, okay. Guys? Yeah, there's one thing about, we're gonna start getting into these licenses a little more deeply. Some of the people that have those licenses think that they can sell them. They can, they can, they can make it a part of the transfer, but they can't bind anybody.
Okay. And it looks like Dave Storitz has not found anything for that individual either, that would prohibit standing his license. I guess the point, I'll make a motion to approve the alcohol liquor license for Oakstone Recreational LLC.
Second.
A motion and second to approve. Any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Number nine, reports from village boards, commissions, and committees, Deer Grove EMS.
We met Thursday, October eighteenth. Calls are slightly up over last year for the month, and then also, we're up over the year, eight eighty-four for the year versus seven twenty-four last year. The updated contract for emergency medical services with the town of Pleasant Springs is in the attorney's hands at, at the town of Pleasant Springs. So, we're waiting to hear back on that. Lifequest, we made some rate adjustments based on their, their recommendation. Collective bargaining agreement to the union has passed, the committee chair has signed, and it's all set. The EMS budget was passed by the village of Deerfield and the town of Cottage Grove. So, that's, that's set for two thousand and nineteen. What else am I missing here?
Anything on the chief's hiring yet?
What was that?
The chief hiring process?
Uh, there's narrowed down to four candidates, and there's some exercises that go on on November tenth, on Saturday. Next meeting is on November fifteenth in Deerfield. And by that time, we're hoping to have the Pleasant Springs contract for services to get that taken care of.
Okay, sounds good. All right. Nine point two, parks, rec, and forestry. Item A is discuss the future flashpad. Sean, oh, there he is. Sorry. Did you have anything else, Sean, anything new? I mean, we kind of got the presentation, but come on up. Do you have anything? Jennifer, I know you asked to speak on this. We'll let Sean do his presentation, then come on up. He can answer your questions for you.
I think based on the budget workshop, there's some possible questions. John, on cost for engineering?
No, actually, the cost to maintain this thing once it's in place.
Yep.
As well as the cost for having some sort of specialist on staff.
Well, if you remember back, back when we talked about flow-through or versus research, the board decided to go with flow-through. So, there is no additional cost for, you know, hiring somebody or one of us being certified or anything like that. So, if you, if you look at the handout that I just gave you, basic, basic total annual operating cost is gonna be about ten thousand six hundred and forty-five bucks a year. As far as seasonal maintenance hours, we're really looking at about sixteen hours a year, which is really just startup at the beginning of the season, and then shutting it down at the end of the season. We'll do our, obviously, our daily maintenance there, picking up trash. But other than that, there's really nothing that we have to do should something, not, you know, unless something were, were to break. If something broke right away, then it would be their problem.
Yeah, it's under warranty, yeah.
Yeah. And then, Mike, you said with the flow-through, round perks, it can handle a water drainage over there. That's not a problem.
There's, well, there, that's going to go to a little basin and then release. There's plenty of those in the park in that area, so there's different options for that. Dry basin, dry end, on the south side of the entrance along Viola's Road. That was probably would be preferable, self-dention basin perks. So, a lot you can hear it, taking water across the north, it goes past, there's a plenty farm there. And kind of having a continuous flow in that direction could be an issue right now. The Olson development would have happened, that was going to correct some of that, the bike bunker by the Silver Plate. Until that happens, it would make sense that it was a drain, not a infiltration basin.
Any questions for Sean?
So, then, then it goes on. Further, my question's about parking. How do the kids get there without getting run over on Clark Street? All those things I brought up before, I want to know, what is all that gonna cost the village? Obviously, it would involve the redesign of Clark Street, which is gonna be coming up. But the current parking lot is not gonna sustain this facility as it stands right now, in my opinion. And then, how do we get folks across the railroad tracks, or however they're gonna get there, if it's along Viola's? Now, the development, it's now off, would have had some sort of perhaps bike trail walking area there. But again, you're gonna have, if, you know, as you said, this is gonna be a star in the village, where are folks gonna park? Because they can't walk there, because it's not within walking distance for a lot of these little kids. So, I want to know those kind of plans, and how much is it gonna cost? Because ten thousand six hundred dollars a year is not what it's gonna cost. It costs us a lot more than that.
I think that the current parking lot that is there is big enough to handle just a flashback. There's how many, sixty, how many stalls there are? I can't remember off the top of my head. Sixty-some stalls there. I don't anticipate having that many cars there.
Okay.
You know, I could be wrong. I could be wrong. I think where the problem, possible problem could be is when we have multiple events going on in that park.
Right.
And there, when I, we did some, I went back and I looked at what rugby and what soccer were doing during the months that we'd be open, which would be basically from Memorial Day to Labor Day. And there's a possibility of five days where we would be packed, you know. And so, we'd have to make decisions like possibly during the fireman's fest, advertising that it's not open, because we couldn't handle everything.
Okay.
And plus, maybe we wouldn't want the carnival people showering there as well.
Probably not.
So, you know, it, it really, for the spring and the fall are the, are the big times for soccer and rugby.
Okay.
Can I have a question? I, I personally think soccer fields would be one of the issues for folks that can draw bigger tournaments and things like that. And I think we miss out on some of that stuff. I understand that you guys only have, but we didn't know what to do.
Mm-hmm.
I think that the location is really not a gate one at the center community, not in the interior community. So, the safety issues of all the communities there and out there.
If, if I may, it is the destination park, and right now, people have to drive there. When I go in, go there in the morning in the summer, anywhere between, you know, eight, ten, eleven, and twelve o'clock, there's ten to fifteen cars that are parked in that lot using the case park. You know, I don't, I don't know, part of the development of the rest of the park, which is down the road, is to add more amenities to those soccer fields. Tried talking with Manoa Grove, both the school district and Manoa Grove youth soccer, about getting some leechers and getting some scoreboards and working together with that, because we don't program... that, because we don't program those, that's all programmed through either the, the school district or the, or the Manona Grove youth soccer. So, I don't disagree with what you're saying, I mean, we definitely need green space, but this doesn't really, doesn't affect that green space, I don't, is that what you're going for?
Or you're saying the money? Because it's not the space.
No, no, it's not, it's, it's, you know, part of this, there's maintenance costs, which I believe is gonna be higher than then, than it should cost, because of those things that come up. I'm more thinking of what are more people gonna be able to use, what's gonna draw more people to the village cottage grove. You know, if this was in the center of the community, where kids are gonna have to get in a car, mom and dad have to drive, that's, that's a huge difference versus, again, crossing train tracks, busy restreaches, development's happening across the road, I don't know, is it Olson, White, Omri, or next year or two?
I don't, I can't tell you that I disagree with that, I wish that we had a downtown we could have bought this into. Any of our other parks right now would not be suitable for putting something of this size into it. We could do something much smaller, but then I think we're back into the same scenario where people don't want a bunch of cars in their neighborhood. I wish we had a, you know, the next biggest park that could possibly come would be in the Omri addition, that was around fifteen to twenty acres there, and, you know, that's probably easier, would be easier to get to, because you could probably like that, but I don't disagree with that.
Two questions, how, how large of, I mean, of a splash pad are we talking about?
This is twenty-five, what you're seeing there is twenty-five hundred square feet. And just, just if I may, just a little history on, on how we got to where we're at. This was part of, the board approved in two thousand and fifty, just some overall concept plan for the park. And then, in, it was also board approved in the park's open space plan, and also in the financial management plan, and so it's just been on the radar for two thousand and twenty, and we're kind of starting to do that. And we've, we've met with, we've had six or seven meetings with our, our friends group, and this is the splash pad that they picked for Cottage Grove.
And the second question is, I know people are going there to cool off, but I mean, what do, what do we have for shade out there?
Um, well, we have the shade structures that are, there's one there, and one at the bottom, plus there are two that are already there, and we are planting trees down there, plus the, you know, the, the proposed shelter would be there as well.
And where in proximity is the shelter scheduled to go?
The shelter would go, hopefully, directly across the path. So, trying to get that bear in, so the shelter would be here, if that makes sense.
Where's the parking lot?
Sorry?
Where's the parking lot?
Parking lot would be behind the shelter.
That's currently the gravel parking lot, or that's the, that's the actual lot?
Yeah, that's the, that's the parking lot.
Question, if I have a question, come on up, say your name.
So, the splash pad, we originally thought, but it won't fit there, so what we'd like to do is put the splash pad here, and the shelter in that location.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Pickle, nine one three, Runcie Court Cottage Grove. I'm here to talk to you a little bit about the splash pad. I sat in your seat for six years, I know what budget time is like. I would urge you to not be simplistic in cuts, I think that's pretty easy to do when you're looking at numbers, and two, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars can be a large number, especially if you're not used to looking at numbers like that. However, I sat on this board when the capital improvement plan was created, and I've sat on the parks board for, well, I chaired it for six years, and I continue to sit on that board. So, I, I feel like we've been talking about this splash pad almost in, in that entire time, so it's not something that's been entered into lightly. I've seen, well, when I first got elected, I wanted a pool, oh, campaigned hard for a pool. Pools are really expensive, this is an awesome compromise. And we have a chamber of congress who's been down on their hands and knees begging, begging this board to give people a reason to come to Cottage Grove. Do I think this is a magic wand?
No.
But it's a start. We built the kids' park, it opened right after I got elected, so it's been seven years since the kids' park was, was opened, and that's a large space that's basically sat empty and had nothing done to it since then. So I would urge you to consider added value to the village, not just looking at numbers. Yeah, I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna do great things for the village, I don't think it's gonna bring them en masse, but I think it's a start. And soccer fields, more parking, all of these things are part of the plan that was passed, what did he pass that to? Twenty fifteen. So it's not like it's news, and I would hope that you would all be well versed on that before taking a hard line against the splash pad. I had one other point. I forgot what it was. Well, people, people, you know, they'll come for this splash pad, and I don't, I don't think, oh, I know what it was, moving it, moving it to a different park. I have been there before, the, the logical spot has to be Bakken, because our other parks are too small, we could move it to Thaden, but then Amy's gonna be really mad at me again. I don't think that's, that's a good way to go. I think Bakken Park is the logical, it's a destination park, it's not a neighborhood park, so you have to look at it from, you gotta shift your, your vantage point a little bit on that one. So, I hope that you consider all that as you're making your decisions, I appreciate the work you put in. You got anything for me?
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? I just, I'm here at the discussion, and then, oh, the future park shelter also, was also on there, so, because of fucking park shelters, so, any other questions for Sean on that?
So is the splash pad and shelter gonna be built at the same time?
Roughly, yeah, yep, we're trying to minimize damage and construction costs by tying it together.
So the shelter's gonna have restrooms and like a drinking fountain and...
Correct, yep. I can show you the preliminary, you can pass this around, I didn't know if everybody would wanna copy of this, but...
So, Sean, where are the other soccer fields? Because I don't see any new ones.
There's not any additional soccer fields.
Can you put that underneath the camera?
Yeah.
No, it's what they've got for over there.
Yep, I can, if the boys can come out and make that work.
So, so we're, we're really not doing anything to address soccer, maybe they haven't, they haven't come back, and maybe they haven't, obviously, those two organizations, you know, as far as giving you...
Thank you.
...what you need to push for more soccer fields.
Well, this was just the original thought, is that when we designed this, does that help, is that, they're doing it. When we designed this, we, we don't have any adult-sized softball fields in the village, and so when we put this together, we wanted to address that need. But it doesn't mean that it can't change.
So there, there is softball?
Yeah, I'm gonna show you here, thank you.
Yeah, it'll help when he's able to bring it up.
It's on the website too, under Parks and Rec.
In a lot of methods.
Because we're waiting for that to pull up, does the shelter tie into what the rugby team is doing, or the rugby club is doing for their shelter out there?
Tie in is how?
I thought at one point that we're supposed to have some sort of shared shelter as part of their contract as well.
Yep, I think that's...
They're supposed to build a clubhouse that has a public restroom.
Yep.
There, because that's taken so long, there'd been some discussion of maybe, maybe they would contribute a certain dollar amount to cover the restrooms in the shelter.
Yep.
And I guess that would be part of our negotiation, the new agreement.
I think you can probably push that down, or do something to get it a little bit bigger. There you go. Does that work?
This is zoomed out a little better.
What's that?
It's a, perfect. There's a zoom button.
Oh, okay.
I like your technique better, Sean.
Good course. Okay, walk us through that, so that's rugby fields up in...
Yep, rugby fields, existing kids' park, existing two soccer fields, otherwise, everything else on here is not necessary yet. So we, originally, when we did this, we thought about putting, maybe I should do this here, can everybody see what I'm pointing at?
Yeah.
We originally thought about putting the, the splash pad in this horseshoe area, right in front of the parking lot, and then, based on all of the, and I'm sorry for the technical terms, the water stuff that comes in there, it's, it wouldn't fit. So that's when we decided to move the splash pad into this area, and hopefully shift the shelter over to that area, because it's a smaller footprint. But that's, that's the plan for the development of the rest of the park. Now, as I mentioned, you know, we do have adult-sized softball fields, which is something that the village doesn't have, this was part of a, when we did our open space plan, we had to meet, meet with local stakeholders, and that would be, one of them was Manona Grove School District, and so I met with Dan and Jared, and talked about when they were still deciding if they're gonna do the ninety-seven million referendum, or what they were gonna do, but I offered up the fact that maybe we could work together, and this could be, because Manona Grove baseball plays over at Fireman Park, and Manona Grove softball could play in this area, and so then everything's kind of been a little hub. That's what I had hoped for, they didn't say yay or nay at that time. But we wouldn't be programming those fields in the spring, we would be mostly using them in the summer, so they would be open, just like North Lawn is right now for them, to use those fields.
As far as the shelters, Sean, as far as locking the bathrooms, is that something that we time lock, or park staff would do it?
We time lock those.
Okay.
So they're open, park hours, so seven AM to ten PM.
Okay. There were some questions about the cost of that, and mics here, might be, so, at the table, and just, those larger price tag, I feel like, than some we're expecting, and, and maybe to talk about, what we meant to that, and...
I believe the budget number is four hundred thousand?
For the shelter.
For the shelter? And I assume that that went around, as far as what it is, but it, it's essentially a, how many, I don't know how many picnic tables you were planning?
You get fifteen, yep. So this, this is an existing shelter in Wapaka, and so we, in trying to not reinvent the wheel with every single shelter, it's like, I really liked the shelter, it's been a little bit modified in this area here, because we're, we're adding a control room for this, for the splash pad, and then also a mechanical room in there. So this is just a little bit different, there's like two less stalls on the women's side, or one less stall on the women's side, and one less stall on the men's side, just to allow us to do that. But this was the overall concept that, that we looked at, and one that I liked, and again, trying to not reinvent the wheel and keep engineering costs down by having to create new plans for everything.
What is in the, what is in the bulk of the space?
Here?
That, that's picnic table.
Yeah, that's open area. Is this what you're talking about here, Jim?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's, that's just a roof over it, and then it's all open air?
Correct, yep, and there'd be a concession area in there that we could program, we could sell concessions during hours of the splash pad, we could sell concessions as we start to program more of the soccer fields, and it also would serve as a kitchen that some people, that you wanted to do a graduation party there, that you would have an area to at least teach your food.
And then what's at the end of the current plan, I guess the footprint is looking at adding a control room for the splash pad controls, so those are indoors, if there's ever maintenance or whatnot, they'll be stubbed through the floor, there's several water pipes that go out to a splash pad, and I know when a gentleman was in from Vortex giving a presentation, he showed some things you could have under sort of a fiberglass quantum hut, this would just be if they were programmed to happen at the same time, you could, instead of having that, you could have it indoor for maintenance and replacement of anything that would happen to it as far as the controls.
So it's really just gonna be used for summer then, pretty much, right?
Up until November first.
Okay.
We keep our shelters open that long, we don't get shelter reservations in, you know, that long, but rugby's using our facility this weekend, so their, their two fields plus our two fields for practice, and so, you know, an, an added restroom for extra people.
Yeah, this time of year, I see.
Yeah, and then we usually close them down around November first.
Other questions?
Does the, is the layout of it, chief, is it like for the shelter, to keep down the shenanigans?
Like, like?
Yeah, or, like I, was it Houston Park where there's some problems sometimes? Would this be open enough to keep people from vandalizing it, or you could be able to see them?
All right. I think we get more of our vandalism from the populated areas, there's not a lot of houses right around the area, where kids would be hanging out at night. North Lawn, right in the middle of all those neighborhoods, we have vandalism there, and I doubt there'd be that much here, it's a security issue.
And there would, there is parking lot lighting, and there would be security lighting in the building, and also, this would be something that I would want to, we don't have these yet, but I would want to put cameras up in that open space, so that we could at least catch someone if something were to happen.
From understanding, the splash pad is two hundred and fifty thousand, and the shelter is four hundred, did I just hear?
Correct.
Where's that captured at the village capital plan?
It's a plant arwing.
Yeah.
So it's spread, spread over the years?
Yeah. What would the annual cost be to maintain that?
Maintain the shelter?
Yeah.
Short of something breaking, which, you know, we, we haven't had any problems yet, it's really just routine, going around picking up garbage, yep, and that's what our staff does every single day. So, short of, you know, like I said, short of vandalism or, or something mechanical breaking, which we haven't had any problems with, I, I don't have an exact number for you, because it really, it would be a variable.
And then this is using commercial siding, vinyls, and, and materials that, you know, you don't have maintenance on, some parts have put up T-one-eleven plywood siding and things like that, that have regular maintenance as far as, you know, paint and restoration costs.
Roof is a standing c metal roof?
That's what it would be, yeah.
As far as bottom line, we're ready more than anyway, right?
That's correct.
Be less to us.
Yeah, it'd be less, more concrete, but less lawn.
Although it might grow more, because there's more lawn.
Right.
Okay, any other questions?
One more point on this is, I mean, if it is a requirement for the rugby club to have some sort of facility to accommodate, I would like us to see if there's some sort of partnership as we move forward, should the board elect to do so with the rugby club in, in partnership.
What's the latest stuff?
Well, Jeremy's a little obsessed with that.
Oh, okay.
He came, he got the, the document, right? I emailed it to him. Oh, you've emailed it. Yeah, they've had it. Yeah. All the time. No, not sure. Sure, yeah. So, anyway, what, what Jim's talking about is an agreement to reimburse for Lee's legal expenses from rugby, and then they would just get, they would provide a five hundred dollar escrow to be drawn upon, you know, for Lee's time, and they, they actually weren't ready yet, they're working with their board on their site plan, and something like later in November, they'll be coming forward to start those discussions, so...
John, just, and kind of picking up on that is, that's all kind of up in the air right now, yeah, whatever the original agreement was, one of the things I did talk to Jeremy about was, okay, you know, I'm willing to step away and say, what, what do you want to do here, and what can we work out, so we're trying to keep it, so that there can be a discussion.
I am meeting with Jeremy next Tuesday, and I started the process of, and I told him that if the rugby club chooses to donate towards the shelter, to amend the contract, that that's not a decision that I can make, that's a decision that you have to make.
That'll influence the board on whether we approve it, so tell them that.
And they'll come, they'll come to Park and Rec, and then obviously, they'll donate as well.
You know, we've been on there, right?
Yes.
I, I guess if we kind of had a pre-existing plan, why does it get cost fifty thousand dollars for design and all that stuff? I mean, you can build a nice shelter for fifty thousand dollars, something like the Lion Shelter, Fireman's Park, as an example.
Yeah, and we were going to the, you know, the costs that we had in the design of that, and I talked to, I talked to Sean, and I said, chief, maybe there's some element of the plan that we can use from that that would bring it down, and as it turns out, when you change the, I mean, we're designing...
And as it turns out, when you change the, I mean, we're designing a different building because we're changing the floor plan. And so the structural analysis that they're doing for the design, the details for the design are gonna be different. There will be similarities in the materials we spec.
So you said there's concessions, is it like a kitchen there too, or is that?
We won't make it like a, a restaurant, no. It'll be like, if you've ever been in North Lawn, it's basically counter space, cooler, and a bunch of, a lot of plugs in a sink.
Okay.
So that you could come in and plug in your escrow, and you could clean up after the fact. But we won't, you know, we can't, quote-unquote, make food there.
Okay, got it. Okay.
JJ, when is the Clark, Clark Street up for redoing? Is it twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty-one. We're gonna ask about possibly twenty twenty, for it down there, but it has to be done by the end of twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Because we're seriously gonna have to look at that. If this goes in, if the splash pad goes in, I'm still concerned about the safety of kids getting over there. So, assuming it's all, it's approved by the board. So we can chat about that if it works.
And the project goes hand-in-hand with the bike path coming along that corridor as well, so...
Yeah, it has to go hand-in-hand with that. So we have to consider additional sidewalk or something of that sort, to ensure that if somebody is walking down there, that they have a safe, you know, a safe way to get there.
Any other questions from Mike or Sean?
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
All right, words from Village Gophers. I encourage you to be on both sides. You have a note already, you have, or are they, James?
No report, Troy stole mine.
Yeah.
They stole mine, too.
Okay. Melissa?
Um, I just wanted to, um, let's see. I've been contacted by a resident about leaf pickup, um, and it's on Nextdoor, that they really wish that the village would provide that service, which I'm on that same page, too, because I have a lot of trees, but...
I've seen some new people, in fact, who moved in from Florida, but it's like people raking piles of leaves to the curb. I think they assume that's going to happen, and then they sit there, and they're like, what, are my leaves still here?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's like, yeah, okay.
Um, and then, also, I've heard a lot of enthusiasm for the splash pad, too, prior to tonight, so...
Yeah.
Yep, I would echo, I heard the same thing about the splash pad. A lot of positives, understanding how much the glue would cost. Second item is, uh, net vic deficiencies are all fixed. Chris was so kind to meet me out there last Friday, give me a tour. And, um, the DNR's come back, and on asylum compliance. Last item is, if anyone has time after the meeting, I know Lisa needs to set up. I plan on sticking around and helping her set up there tomorrow's election.
There are some of us that aren't allowed to vote, so I just wanted to make sure that's...
Keep the lawyers out.
No, there's, there's been some, uh, lack of adequate construction, I guess, so...
Okay. All right, John?
So you screwed up on purpose.
Yeah.
Okay.
Worked pretty well.
Uh, no report.
Okay. Um, I have under my name appointment of trustee to Deer Grove VMS commission. Are we in a position to put John Russell on there now?
I think we're still waiting.
We're waiting, yeah.
Yeah.
And actually, it, it would probably benefit me, because I have a medical procedure on the fifteenth, so I don't think I would even be able to make that meeting that night. So if we can hopefully select a chief and get me on board by December, and Warren will end up taking that position.
We'll keep that on as a future agenda item then.
And Melissa, you can make the fifteenth?
All right. And...
Okay, let me hear.
And I'm lawyer.
As long as the county board is passive.
Okay.
Just a quick introduction, the item under Lee's name, the legal briefing status updates. During budget discussion, there was some talk about, you know, what are some ways maybe to, try to get better handle on what, um, Lee's doing as far as, you know, cost of budget and things like that. So I was thinking, Lee could provide you with the, um, more routine update of what he's working on, and give you guys a chance to say, maybe, stop doing that, or do something else, or, um, just some direction, I guess.
Well, it probably comes as no surprise that, um, both the professional fees for engineering and legal are traditional targets, or, or, I mean, at least people are saying, well, you know, where, where is our money being spent? And I understand that, and I'm happy to try to answer that as well as I can. Um, as, as I go into this, this list, I just want to mention to you that, um, from a budget point of view, I think that the, the village gets a pretty good deal with me. I mean, I've stayed at a hundred and sixty dollars an hour for three years. Um, I was at a rate before that that was almost embarrassingly low. And, um, I've tried to keep it at the hundred and sixty. And candidly, uh, John had asked me, do you need to budget more? And to some extent, the answer to that is, I, I think you do, because every month I write off time. And, um, I've kept track of that, and, um, that, that's difficult to do. But I, I think that you get a good bargain for, for what, for what, um, happens legally. So, um, right now, the things that I'm working on, the summit, vacating a small piece of property for summit is kind of the last piece of that puzzle. And so that will be coming along, um, that will be the, the village, uh, that's the village's responsibility. And that's another aspect of this, is that I'll try to identify where we are getting reimbursement and where we aren't. The Corey Ridge Platte is inching along. There are some, there are just some issues in terms of how they, um, interpret the developer agreement as opposed to ourselves, and so we're trying to work through those. Uh, the Silver Badger LLC transaction with the Kudorezi site, um, has been finalized. Uh, we just finished up and had the closing for, um, Punzarella LLC and, oh, Stone. And there's another proposal this evening, uh, that we'll be talking about in closed session. We're, the, um, addition, or adding the easement to the emergency services building is essentially done. I'm just waiting to hear back from Dennis Richardson on whether the, um, Hustons are okay with, with it. I talked to Chris this evening briefly before the meeting about the emergency government ordinance, and told him that I would, um, send over the materials that, that have been referred by the village board. Also, the, well, there's the Flynn Hall matter, and then rugby is also going to be taking time, and has taken time, and that's why we want to make sure we get a, uh, an agreement for reimbursement, which we try to do all the time. Then, uh, tonight we start the administrators' performance evaluation, and, um, also, in this past year, two things that, that I've tried to do is give you some background on the village-town, um, relationship, and also village-town boundary agreement. Because we've got a lot of new people who have never been exposed to that, so I tried to make sure that you get all of that information. So at any point, I, I will be asking you at times, you know, should I be working on this? Should I not be working on that? And, um, would like you to, to let me know, um, your thoughts.
Okay. I haven't seen anything in that listed. I would want you to stop right now with certain...
Just one comment, I think that was one of my lesser concerns, but that's a good update, you know, during these village board meetings. My major concern is going back to, you know, budget in twenty seventeen, sixty thousand, actual seventy-nine thousand. Eighteen, sixty thousand, we're looking at seventy-five thousand. So once again, next year, we're going in with a sixty thousand dollar budget. So each year, you know, nineteen, fifteen to nineteen grand is coming from private cash reserves, but we're not, in my opinion, budgeting enough if these actual bills are, are correct, which it sounds like they are.
They are?
Yeah.
I would say they're not coming out of reserves, the budget is performed. We've been in black in our budget, so other areas of the budget...
Other categories?
Other, other areas of the budget are coming under, other, some lines go over, some come under. But we, since I've been here at least, have, you know, met with other budget.
All right. Matt, anything else?
Yes, um, received a letter from a local contractor, um, thanking some of J.J. Larson's staff. I'm probably still maybe what he was gonna say, but, um, our foreman, Marty, and Kristen Crowsey, administrative assistant, were recognized by the local business that they had some urgency to get a connection to fire hydrants, and, um, you know, they acted quickly and had it scheduled for, you know, the next day it would be taken care of. And they said, really, if you could go out there, it, you know, it was really important to them. And, you know, they got it done within hours, so, um, anyway, just wanted to recognize some staff.
Okay. All right, Aaron? All right, Chief Labor, anything else?
Nothing.
All right. Gave you anything, I'd be like, public...
Oh, that's cool, man.
Did you hear from, uh, the roundabouts? Could connect, maybe, if you had something there.
Oh.
As of, hopefully tomorrow morning, thinking, um, Mike's folks have worked on the right-of-way permit for DOT for the two, maybe the north and south of the interstate. And I'm gonna submit to Dan County for right-of-way permits to basically clean them up. We only got, uh, two proposals, but really reasonable price to clean them up, and then basically reassess in the spring. But, uh, hopefully get those permits turned around quick, so that the contractor can get out and actually do it. But it's taken quite a bit of doing to figure out what we need, but hopefully they turn around the permits quick, and we can get out there, clean them up, and then move forward from there.
One question I have, uh, not that you go off the top, you had the snow falling in the road miles, because I think when I first started, we had like twenty-two miles of road that fall out there. Are we at?
Thirty-three point five, it's a lot, you know, thirty-three, thirty-four, yeah. It's not good snow this year.
Right.
I agree with what I had.
Anything you can do that'd be great.
It's snow this weekend.
Right. All right, thanks. Thank you.
All right, um, John, anything else?
No, I've talked enough.
All right. Number one, communications and miscellaneous business, discuss approval of vouchers. Any questions, or maybe on vouchers?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, for the second?
I'll second.
Motion and second to approve vouchers as presented. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Abstention. Motion passed. Correspondents, I have nothing official, let me... All right, upcoming community events?
Voting tomorrow. The Cottage Grove Triad meets next Monday at nine-thirty at the municipal building. And the Optimists meet on November twenty-seventh at six-thirty at the Outpost.
Okay. JJ, I know it's not really a community event, but are you doing another brush pick-up? Yeah, I see a lot of people putting brush out.
This week, uh, okay. That's fine, yeah.
Okay. Sounds good. Anything else? Future agenda items, I'll keep, uh, appointment of John Russell on Deer Grove VMS until we can finalize it. Anything else?
I think we have to, uh, talk about adding Flynn Hall rental fee into the budget for the next agenda item, because that's a public hearing for the budget, correct?
Uh, yeah. Yep. Anything else? Okay. All right. At this time, I'll make the motion that the Village of Cottage Grove Village Board enters into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen eighty-five, Baron One, Cherokee. Liberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Commerce part of bid five land sale negotiation. And the Cottage Grove Village Board will enter into closed session pursuant to state statute nineteen eighty-five, Baron One, sharing seats. Considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employees over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Ministers' evaluation. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, may I roll call?
Alan? Elmore?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Member?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
All right, we're now in closed session. Deals here first, promoted, welcome to take care.